Ready to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go ahead and ask for approval of this morning's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm gonna go ahead and skip down to items number 12. Approval of the minutes for June 27th and 28th of 2018.
Moving to approve the minutes of June 27th and 28th.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item I'll consider is item number 13, approval of the claims for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims for payment for July 3rd, 2018.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll go ahead and work down the list, I've got one more item. Item 14, the application for fireworks permit from Heath Stoli.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the fireworks permit for Heath Stoli. The date the fireworks display shall take place is July 21st at an empty lot by the school football field in Radcliffe.
I will second that for discussion.
Okay, I have a motion, a second.
Is this in town?
Asked the mayor of Radcliffe to join us today so he could make sure that he's okay with this permit.
Yeah, is this in town?
Approval.
Oh.
But as we spoke, Mr. Mayor, there's no ordinance in Radcliffe prohibiting.
No, we just follow the state code, yep.
So, this is okay and...
It's just at our town celebration that Saturday night.
Okay.
Okay.
The... Also in this permit, it has no insurance covered for the display. I would ask that it gets, that this gets voted down for two reasons, one being it's not in our jurisdiction, it's in the Radcliffe jurisdiction, and the insurance.
Okay.
Is the football field in incorporated Radcliffe? Is it?
It is.
Heath wasn't sure if it was borderline, okay? And then, the insurance question, I'm sure you could provide that, but if you don't really need our permission...
Yeah, we can figure out the insurance thing with him later.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, okay.
So, do I need to just withdraw my motion then?
If you'd like.
Or call for the vote.
Or call for the vote.
Okay.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of approving the fireworks permit say aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. So, permit is denied, but it goes back to local jurisdiction, so, all right.
We'll take care of it, you're welcome.
All right, the next thing I have, I've asked the Harden County engineer to come in for today's public hearing. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on the road classification at 305th Street, Section 17 in Grant Township.
Sure.
Taylor.
Sure, anyone that's unfamiliar, we got some local residents here. So Hubbard's up here, two and a half miles, and that's Highway 65, this is a one-mile stretch of gravel road right off of it, and it's been Level B since 89, is that about right? I think that's when it was passed. So recently, in like the mid-2000s, somebody built a house on it. Stan lives right there, and you guys run those hog buildings too, right? So it gets a lot of traffic, 45 cars a day. They've spent a lot of their own time maintaining the road. We still plow it in the winter because somebody lives on it, but it does get ignored a lot during the summer. They tried back in 2011 to get it to Level A, so we're bringing it back to you guys to see if you have a problem with it. From secondary road standpoint, we don't have a problem with it.
There's a cemetery on that road, correct?
Correct, yep, Idaho Cemetery is right there.
We should be a Level A to the cemetery and from the house, from the cemetery to 65 and from the house to the west, right? The Level B would only be that stretch in between.
Right now, Level B's the whole thing, and I'd say you just do the whole thing at that point. Especially what, you know, it's the most direct route for Stan and the hog building to Highway 65.
Off a state highway?
Yes.
I was there when Leonard brought it to us in 2011, I know we talked about it for a while, and I can sit here and agree, I believe it needs to be Level A, I don't like any Level Bs off state highways.
Okay. So it is a public hearing, this is a chance for the public to speak. Would you guys, anybody like to speak at this time? Okay. Hearing none, and no comment from the public, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all... All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item we have would be the resolution on the road classification that was just presented in the public hearing, which would be road classification, 305th Street, Section 17 of Grant Township.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, changing the classification of county road.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, any discussion?
When we approached this before, there was a policy keeping us... That was in question, I believe that there was a dollar amount that was suggested through the policies that we had. I would like to not do that, being the fact it is on a state highway. And again, I don't believe any Level B should be based off a state highway, but that's me. Especially for, I should rephrase that, a Level B that has straight-through traffic going through.
Okay. Renee, anything? All right, I'll ask for roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The next I have is item number six, utility permits and secondary roads report.
Yep, we just had the one utility permit under Y Avenue, just north of D-67. Secondary roads-wise, they are paving on S-56 to New York Lee, so expect lots of slowed vehicles there.
Is it a pilot car situation?
Yes, yep, and it probably will be for a month.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Taylor, did you have a chance to update some of that road closure stuff?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, it's up to date, yep.
Okay, so we do have the utility permit 7-3-18 presented before us.
I'll make a motion to approve the Harden County utility permit application by Grunde County Rural Electric Cooperative for the purpose of installing primary line under Y Avenue at D-67 at Interduct located in Section 25, Union Township.
I'll second it.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next I have is authorization of Innovative Ag Services to operate road signs resulting in periodic temporary road closures, 310th Street, Section 22 of Concord Township. Taylor, I'll let you discuss this, and then I know we have representative from Innovative Ag here this morning, if you'd like to add anything.
Sure, so right now, the current situation, this is Garden City. So how often would you say you'd get these?
Probably maybe this summer, six.
Six?
Six to eight a year.
Okay, okay, so six to eight times a year, the train, and you said a hundred-car minimum, right? For them to even stop? So it's pretty, so every time they stop at the Garden City, they are stretched up past this half-mile line. So, you know, it takes them a long time where it's stopped in the road, there are no gates, there are no lights, it's just a sign that says railroad crossing. So until they get up there and unhook it, move it, you just have a train sitting in the middle of the road. They had a similar situation up by Alden, and that's been years, ever since I've been driving, where Innovative Ag has the authority to just go and put up the signs to close, you know, pretty much stop traffic from getting down there, to prevent a situation where the car could hit a train. So this is kind of a general layout of how I got it, and the next couple of slides will show you what the signs look like. So this is coming off a highway, and I just wanted to say 2,000-foot ahead, because if you just say road closed ahead, I know trucks are gonna go down it, but if you tell them the distance, you got a good chance. So the DOT always likes us to do 500-foot aheads, and then we got the gates, that one's easy because it's an intersection. There's a house there and a utility transformer there, so we decided to put the gate after that because you don't ever want to have a situation where they can't get to there. So can we go to the next slides and we can show them what they look like? So this is what the signs look like 95% of the time, they're up, you can't really see them. So there you can see Joe's, you know, pulled it down, and there's a light they can switch on that'll flash just in case it happens to be at night. Then this is what the gates look like when they're open, and it's perfect when we were out there because there was even a train right there split. This is by Alden, by the way, just for the example, and then that's what the signs look like, also with the flashing beacon on them.
Are they solar?
I don't think so. Solar?
Or battery?
I'd assume they're batteryed, yeah.
They're the big batteries in there.
Probably.
So would this be going...
They shut off.
The next section around this train then, on the gravel?
Yes, yep, it's on a gravel road just half-mile north of Garden City.
So the train usually shows up not when they tell us it's going to be, but that's just how it usually works. Then we've got 15 hours to load it. They don't always come right away when we get it loaded and say it's ready to pull, depends. For instance, we worked Sunday before Memorial Day, it showed up and they didn't pull or anything Tuesday. But normally, two, couple of days between it showing up, us loading it, and then them coming back and picking it up. So that would be the period of time that we'd look and close it. So when they came to pull it, they come to pull it, then we just open the gates back up and shut the lights down. That's what we've been doing at Alden. At Garden City, one challenge and the reason why we'd like to do this, or additional reason why we'd like to do this is if you're coming from the west on that gravel road, you can see the engines running, right? If you're coming from the east, you can flip back to that Alden picture and we could show you the same thing at Alden, that one. So if you're coming, this is looking north, 99% sure.
Yep.
So if you go north, if these gates weren't here, you can see the main line moving. But if you're coming from the other direction, then you're inhibited by those cars that are setting there, and you can't see as well. So by the time you nose out there...
Yep, because it's double tracks, yep.
You're close to getting your front end clipped. So for us, the concern is buses, well, anybody, but if we've seen people sneak through there when they shouldn't. So we'd like to get this sewn up like Alden is, and we think it's a benefit for everybody.
It is, minimal amount of driving around for, you know, potentially saving a life, I think it's worth it.
So if we, you know, what would change? I don't see us loading 50 trains a year, because we have too much local consumption, either big feed mills or ethanol plants. So the 68 could grow, you know, with yield growth on the corn and bean crops. So if you take, let's say, seven trains a year and two to three days between that train showing up, us loading it, and then pulling it, then that kind of gives you an idea, maybe you're 14, 15, 365ths, is how your relationship to us close. And then that other map, that other map, so let's talk about the inconvenience. Well, the people that live there on the left, on the west side of the tracks, I don't know what they're, by nature, they normally do, whether they're going west towards Ames or not, but if that's their primary mode, then...
They won't be affected.
...the inconvenience is minimized. If you're coming from the east, then you want to cut through. If you want to go south, you're miles from the county road, park maintenance. If you go into Radcliffe, you go north, you gotta go north anyway. So we don't see a huge inconvenience, but if I lived there, I'd probably argue a little stronger, one way or the other. So safety, safety from traffic, especially at night.
Yes.
Because those trains might sit there overnight.
Yeah, yeah, actually last Thursday night, I was out there at 2:00 in the morning, and we were taking a string. We parked 48 cars north of that gravel road, and that's what it takes to make it all fit. So they came in about 9:30 and dropped it, split the road, the gravel road, then we grabbed it and pulled it south, loaded it, pushed it back north. So it's dark out there, and we got done probably noon, 2:00 the next day, and they came the next morning pulling it. Saturday morning, and then they claimed there was a switch problem, so we had to fix it, just came back at 3:00. So those are some of the complications associated with. I told you, I told you they'd pull it within three hours after we loaded it. You couldn't find anyone, given daylight, Memorial Day, then they didn't do it. Other times, if they need the engine set, then they pull up very quick. So if it's minimal, this one day that road's closed, it could be three. It could be more than that, but normally, they don't set much longer than that because they're incentivized to get a move in somewhere.
But you're still at the mercy of them, their schedule.
Yep, yep.
Why can't they just unhook the train and wait, and then hook the train back up?
That's what they do now, yeah.
And then, and then pull, I mean, I was born and raised in Austenville, the elevator was right there, and that's, you know, and they went across that blacktop road going north to Dumont, and they didn't really, you know, whatever I want to say.
Yeah, on the road.
Yeah, stop traffic that long, and I mean, there was gravel pit there at the time, so, you know, gravel trucks were going back.
As he was saying, it's a double track, so the track next to them can still have a train running on it all the time when this one's parked there.
Yeah, actually, I were at gravel roads after it's two tracks, main line's still running.
Yep, and then yours is off to the side.
Six, three hours that night, I'm missing four trains went through.
So you wouldn't be able to see that?
Yeah, the person driving.
And that's our concern, that main line's running, and so...
Yep, cars traveling this way, could not see a train coming down if it's blocked by theirs parked there.
So you may...
And when the lights still were...
Doesn't have lights.
Well, it doesn't have lights.
No arms, no lights.
It's a gravel road crossing. Now in town, in Garden City, that county road crossing has arms and lights.
But I thought this one had lights.
It's on a gravel road.
Yeah.
But it does over on the, on the highway that goes...
D-65.
Yeah. It does have arms and lights there.
I'm sorry, I thought that's what you were talking about.
This is north of, no, this is north of Garden City.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Didn't know what we were talking about.
We're good then. So I don't know how we did this last time, if we had a resolution, or if we just kind of, you know, gave them permission to operate the signs. I'm not sure how we did it last time, it's a long time ago.
I think, I think we should probably look up to see how they did that in the Alden, and follow the same procedures.
Anybody have any idea when that was?
98, 99? I bet I'm pretty close, I was up there working then.
Okay. We can try to find that, and then we can bring that to you at next board meeting then.
Sounds good.
So now you understand the situation and what we're asking for then.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So I don't know if I have the information, but if I can dig, and I think Mark must retire, he would have been working with that process, that's why, so what?
I don't...
Before we move forward.
We kind of want to figure out what process we use, like, did we do a county resolution that gave you guys, you know, the access to do it or not? Or was it just a...
And then in that resolution, it stated who was responsible for the gates being closed.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, it's my understanding, again, I don't know if we have it or not, but you guys might show in your official register, right? It's my understanding, when the train comes, we're responsible to go out and shut the gates, and the lights working, and then open it back up when the train pulls.
That's in a nutshell.
All right.
Other than that, I don't, I don't really see a problem with it unless somebody wants to come to the meeting again and doesn't want it to happen, but... And I know we talked about this here a while back when we were working on that Alden crossing. He brought, he brought it up to us, but at the time, he asked about closing the entire road and making it a private road.
It was my understanding that he had feedback that they wanted it closed permanently.
Right.
They, I'm not sure I can define who "they" is, but that was my understanding, so, right? And Ron retired, said we got to get back to it. We prefer not to close it permanently because it's just, it's more of an effort, sort of relationship with the neighbors who would like to use it the other 345 days a year, then it would otherwise be open. So that's why we prefer the town. We think if you got your favor, this is fantastic.
It works, it works great in Alden, I'll put it that way, so, the situation up there, so I'd say just replicate it.
Well, here's an example, so seven trains a year and 400, it's 2,800 trucks.
Yeah.
That's the alternative.
Right.
Yeah.
That's a lot of trucks.
Yeah.
It's about 400 trucks a train, 4,000 for sure, about 400 trucks a train.
Okay, we'll get some research done and bring it back to the table.
Sure.
Yeah, so, so is that, is that in the, who's court? Is that in the court here to find the records associated with this?
Ours, yeah.
I'm not sure I'd have anything, but if so...
If you can reach out to somebody that might have a firm date, and just keep in contact with Taylor.
I think I could get a date.
Sure, thank you, Rick.
All right, anything else on that matter?
No, I don't think so, we'll just, we'll keep working on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rick.
The next item, I have item number eight, review and take action on a proposal for professional engineering services, Bridge 3267 over the Iowa River in the city of Alden, project number BHS-SWAP-0077-601-FC-42. Taylor.
So this is for our city of Alden Bridge, as you know, it's a historic bridge, it's going to be very complicated. So this is our contract with Calhoun Burns out of West Des Moines, they usually do all of our special bridge designs for us. So I'm just asking you guys to give them permission to design the bridge for us. It's going to take at least 18 months probably to get through all this, because you got to go through the state historic office and everything. It's going to be a long, drawn-up process.
You sound really excited.
Yeah, I am.
All right.
So that's it, any questions you guys got about that? Last time they did the one south of Alden, it's kind of the same situation, it was $75,000. And that's paid for out of our state farm-to-market account, so it's not Harden County dollars, it's state of Iowa dollars. And then we will be splitting those costs at the end of the project with the city of Alden 50/50.
So it's Calhoun Burns?
Yes. They're the ones that do all the bridge inspections on it every other year, anyway.
So you're wanting approval for them to do the engineering, is that...
Correct.
Okay. All right, I will therefore make the motion to use the services of Calhoun Burns to, for the services of professional engineering over the Iowa River in the city of Alden Bridge.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
Does Alden have to agree to this as well?
No, so I looked at the joint agreement we had, and we agreed that we were in charge of the design aspect, and they're in charge of like the land purchase aspect, so...
Okay.
This is all on us.
Yep, that's good.
All right.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Is this still a 2019 project?
I'd say 2020.
Thank you. All in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next I have is item nine, approve the contract for road markings contract project FM-CO42-91-55-42. Taylor.
Yep, so we just got this in the mail, this is for all of our centerline paint in the county, and we did a couple of the white symbol markings on the north side of the county. The low bid was Vogel Traffic Services out of Orange City for $43,000. It's usually the same two companies that bid on it every year, so it was pretty close, so it's a pretty good price, I like it. So I'd ask for approving the contract to Vogel Traffic Services.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for road markings contract project number FM-CO42-91-55-42 to Vogel Traffic Services.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good. Item number 10 is county engineer's contract.
You want a contract?
Sure.
I don't think you have a choice, so. I was informed by Mike Galloway at Ailer's and Cooney that we need to establish a contract with the county engineer, Taylor Rawl, for professional services, and so Ailer's and Cooney have drawn up a contract that has been reviewed by Mike Galloway and by Taylor Rawl.
Are you...
Yeah, I think we went over enough.
Okay.
Contract's also been reviewed by the boards, sent to us as well.
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the employment contract and agreement with county engineer Taylor Rawl.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none? Yep.
Yep.
Thank you. Nancy, roll call?
Renee.
Aye.
Aye.
BJ.
Aye. Next item I have is public comments, this is the time for the public to comment about anything that's not on today's agenda. Anything? Yes, ma'am?
Has the, about the like tree cutting and this and that, is that, I think her first name was Megan, or whatever, has that contract ever been approved?
Contract.
For her?
She's an employee, she's not a contract employee, is that what you mean?
Yeah, I didn't know.
Yeah, we don't have...
I didn't know if she had like a special...
Contract?
Yeah.
No, nope, she was just hired, a hired full-time employee.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay, anything else? All right, item number 15, auditor's monthly report.
Make a motion to approve the auditor's monthly report for the month of June with the total receipts of $835.
I will second that.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item 16, discussion of changing the regular meeting dates.
We had that thrown on the agenda towards the end of last week's meeting. I would kind of like to go back to a weekly program, it seems that drainage pops up more than every two weeks, and when you're dealing with timelines and things like that, it, I think we should have it weekly. I know it might make some of these meetings smaller, but there's other things that could pop up that can be taken care of on a weekly basis.
Okay.
I fully agree.
Okay. So...
And it'd be less confusing for, for people, because it's just the way it's always been done.
Yeah.
We tried it, I'm more comfortable the other way.
Okay.
I am too. So I'll make a motion to go back to our regular meeting dates of every Wednesday of the month.
Okay.
I will second that with discussion.
Okay, I have a motion as second, discussion, Lance?
Discussion, we need a set of time, I would probably start it off, we have drainage meetings already scheduled end of the August, so that would conflict with those meetings that have already had public meetings. So I, I would suggest that we probably start this in August, or in September, back to the every week, 10 o'clock, just with drainage, we've been starting drainage at 8:30, 9 o'clock, that would conflict with the 10 o'clock meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
It's a suggestion.
Can you speak up, Lance, I'm speaking hard, I have a motor running here.
Um.
Whatever it is.
See, it's on turn.
But we can hardly hear you.
We, we have, we have scheduled meetings already lined up for drainage, public hearings and other meetings in the month of July and August, so I suggest that we probably either push it back till September or figure out which dates they are before we get our definite time and date.
We can put together a schedule, effective.
Was it you guys, the beginning of the organizational meeting, January, you set your dates, so I would suggest maybe just setting new dates.
Right, amending that and setting new dates.
And then I put that on the website.
Sure.
So I, I guess what I would ask is that we change your motion and come back with set dates and times.
Well, or we can't change the times of those meetings to set them back?
I don't know if it's a 30-day notice ahead of time.
Especially for completion hearings, bid lettings.
We did those, and I don't, I don't have the schedule in front of me as to when we did them, and I don't wanna create a problem overlapping.
So what would be better, waiting till?
Get our, get our schedule in front of us.
Till December or just?
Well, I think we can get our schedule in front of us, and like Micah said, just set the dates again for the rest of the year.
Okay.
But I, I do believe we need to go back to one a week.
Okay, so.
Take your motion back, vote it down at this time, and bring back again.
With a full, with a set schedule.
Okay, so I'll rescind my motion.
Okay.
I'll rescind my second.
All right.
We've rescinded the motion and the second, we'll make another motion.
So, what are we doing then?
We're voting.
Okay, so.
On, on having meetings every week?
We haven't done that yet, I've rescinded the motion that I made, and so we'll vote on rescinding that, and then we'll make a new motion as far as what we're gonna set.
Okay.
Okay. So all in favor of approving the rescinded motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, at the next meeting, we'll bring the list of amended dates to include every Wednesday for the meetings and take action at that time.
Yes, well, is it next week, are we gonna have a meeting next week, or is it gonna be two weeks?
That's up to you.
So I would, I would bring it back at July 11.
Our next meeting.
Yeah, that's next week.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
And I don't have any drainage done written in there yet, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. The next thing I have is item 17, it's a resolution for economic development.
So when?
Hold on, we're, hold up ma'am, just a second, we're already to the next thing, so we'll, we'll come back to you, okay? Okay, so item 17 is a resolution regarding economic development activities.
I don't, I got a couple of questions on the resolution.
Okay.
We are looking at adding $1,440, roughly $3 a month to this resolution. I don't have a problem just adding funding, I don't know that we need a resolution. There's, we have to do a 2080 if we were gonna put them on to our healthcare.
Okay.
With them, we have it with one entity, not the other, and then you gotta do the associate member resolution as well. We haven't done that, so if we're, if all we're really doing is providing funding for the healthcare, to boost funding to them for healthcare, I don't think we need a resolution. The resolution's kinda unclear, review those office hours will be examined quarterly, determine whether the demand of this type of economic development is met, and that, along with that, and we're looking at two hours a week of office time here, let's just tell, let's just give a dollar amount and say we want two hours a week office time.
So we can just.
I don't, I don't know that we need the resolution, and then set a dollar amount, not established by a resolution, but a dollar amount that this board establishes.
We can just approve to increase what we're giving them.
In lieu of office.
Okay.
Right.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, so I would agree with that too.
Take no action.
Yeah.
Yes, Julie?
Okay, so what this is asking is that Harden County covered insurance benefits? Is it, is that what I understand?
Fund, fund the amount of the insurance benefits.
Yeah, to fund the amount of the insurance, the health and dental and life insurance benefit.
No, it was just health.
This is health.
Oh, this is health, okay.
This is health insurance.
Just health.
They're not actually Harden County employees. Is that the basic, is that?
Correct.
Your understanding correct?
Yes.
Yeah, we do have a 2080 with.
The alliance.
City of Ackley, and the Iowa Falls.
At the city, the economic development groups.
Right, the economic development groups to allow them to be on our health insurance plan.
Have a 2080 agreement on town.
No.
Right.
Only half that.
How long has that been in place?
We don't fund all of that, though.
Do you have the copy of the 2080?
Oh yeah, it would be recorded.
How long has that been in force? A long, long time?
Yeah.
So.
Oh, I don't know.
The other county residents asked to be on.
Yeah.
County health insurance.
Absolutely.
And I mean, you know what, I know some people down the street, can they come and ask to be on there? It's important to understand that, I understand why, why people want the, you know, why they would want this, of course, everybody wants health insurance, but gee whiz, it would be nice if it was available to all citizens, but thank you for it.
Okay.
The agreement that we have is with, for, with other cities, they're the city employees, so there's only a few from each town possibly that, and we don't fund any of that, they, the cities fund that.
But we would.
Economic development groups.
Well, just the economic development.
Local option sales tax.
Local option sales tax, right, right, it doesn't really matter to me whether it comes from, but it's county one, so yeah, if I get a copy of that, I'll just.
I still don't get why we're funding Iowa Falls and Ackley.
Okay.
For Harden County.
Go ahead, I'll let you take this question.
What did I say?
No, no. The young lady sitting in front of you is a new economic development.
Are you asking for this, about the city employees or the economic development directors?
Well, yeah, economic development person.
Yeah.
Why are we funding that?
In a, in a nutshell, Harden County, a long time ago, I would assume back in the 90s, established an alliance between the four economic development groups in Harden County, which was Hubbard, Eldora, Ackley, and Iowa Falls, and it's been in place ever since. The problem is Eldora pulled out of the economic development, Hubbard has pulled out of the economic development. The economic development is not a city, it's people within the city, it's a development group inside their city, they request funding from the city, they request funding from the county, they work in the entire county, they work for this group, Ackley is in the same boat, she, Angela here works for Ackley, she does not work for the city of Ackley, she works for the Ackley Development Group, and what they're asking for is additional funding so that they can help retain these economic development people by offering equivalent amount of money for health insurance. Ackley does not have, is not part of our 2080 for the health insurance, Iowa Falls was, they can be on our health insurance plan at their full cost, Ackley would have to request to have that done, and they have not done that, but what they're requesting is that we fund economic development, the alliance itself, a dollar amount more that they could use to help sustain health insurance and keep and retain the employees.
Because they not only.
Versus having, versus having a county economic developer.
Right.
Funded solely by the county and under all our insurance and all our IPers, this is an alliance that was developed back in the 90s, it's unique, it's different.
Yeah, it's unique.
Well, so they don't, they don't just work.
It's just like what they have in Grundy County and Butler County.
They don't work just for that city, they work with all of the towns in the county.
Then why don't we just have one that the county pays for, that works for the whole county?
There's too much work to go around.
What do you mean? I haven't seen anything done in Harden County yet.
Pauline, okay, really?
Oh.
Pauline, that's, that's a horrible statement to make.
Well, I don't, what do you mean by economic development? What?
Have you seen the laundromat here in town?
The what?
Laundromat, the laundromat, Bud's.
Yeah?
They helped Cindy Littweiler, the former Iowa Falls area economic development director, helped Aaron establish his business. That's just one example within two blocks of here. I know, you roll your eyes at it and.
That's a little.
You tell Aaron Budwig that, Pauline, tell Aaron Budwig that his business is a little thing. You know what, people of Eldora appreciate Aaron Budwig, they do.
So if I start a little shop selling.
Trinkets?
Yeah, trinkets, you're gonna.
Yeah.
You have, you have a person to reach out to, to help you get started.
They helped him get the title to the property, there were issues with that, they helped, she helped him get the title to the property, and then go through the proper channels and to probably get funding and, and all of that.
You can't tell me one person alone can't do that for the whole county?
I am telling you that one person for the county cannot do all that.
Look at all the new business and industry in Iowa Falls over the last 20 years, 15 or 20 years.
Like what?
Yeah. Pauline, I would encourage you to join the Chamber of Commerce or get active in economic development, there's a Dollar General in Ackley that, their last developer, they've helped expand Triple T Meats in Ackley, they've helped redevelop the downtown after there was, there was explosion there, that's just examples in, in Ackley, Iowa Falls has helped along the way with Cargill, with other, the Hibbett Sports, with the Dollar Tree, I mean, what you consider economic development, are you looking for a factory of 5,000 people? Or are you looking for people helping the mom and pop shops up that, that, you know, maintain communities? Economic development comes in many forms. Julie?
I still think one person can do that.
And one form apparently was Project Thomas, did the county ever answer the second request for information that was filed? And so what was it now that that's all over? Please tell us what that was.
She did, that day in the meeting, the last time in the meeting, she said it has to do with the rail park out there.
Yeah.
And what, why, why was that a big secret and why didn't she answer the rate of information? See, the whole thing.
There were no, they, we did.
Yeah.
Micah.
The information is in the railroad office. Agreed with information requested.
And it has nothing to do with Iowa.
And, and it does have.
It has.
Economic development.
No, it doesn't have anything to do with Iowa Select, though, and that was what was, and Jeff Hansen.
You don't, you know.
That's, that's what the request was.
There was, and it, and if you look at the wording, any other entities. So it's over there and they.
The information that was requested, I gave to the county attorney's office.
Oh, wow. Well, it was some time ago.
Yeah, okay, very good. Thank you.
But you do, transparency is good, and economic development is very good, but you just need to make sure that everything is transparent.
So how, how many people are in economic development then?
Two.
Just two, just two then?
Part of being the alliance, you have to have a full-time economic developer on staff. If you want a part-time economic developer, you're not part of our alliance, that was the revised 2080 that we did. If Eldora would choose to go back to a full-time economic developer, they could be back on this alliance as well. But the funding does not come solely from Harden County, most of the funding comes from the developers themselves, we just tap into their resources to utilize it through the county.
For example, I sit on the zoning board commission in Iowa Falls and the hotel motel tax advisory board, and a significant portion of the funding to the Iowa Falls economic development comes from the hotel, motel tax advisory board.
Okay, so we only really have two people then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You were kind of leading me to believe we had a lot more people than that.
Yeah, we, we do have a lot more people, but two full-time people, the board in Iowa Falls, how many do you have on your board?
I'm not.
Or in Ackley, nine, nine people.
But I mean paid people.
Yeah.
We just have two paid people then.
In the county.
Right.
Right.
That we, we do not fully fund them, though. Their boards fund them, we just contribute a share to cover the remaining portions of the county.
Okay, and that's just two paid people then?
Correct.
Which are not even equivalent to one full-time position.
Okay, that's, that's what I was trying to get at, how many paid people that we contribute to, okay.
Julie.
Just one question, do permanent hard-time employees of the county receive health benefits and health insurance? What's the number of hours?
30 per week, 1,560 hours a week.
Do we have many county employees under that 30 hours?
Part-time, they're considered part-time then.
Yes, but they don't get.
No.
Health insurance.
No.
How many do we have? Do we know approximately what that number would be?
No.
No clue off the top of my head.
Oh, I think that's something that should be looked into.
Auditor's office, auditor's office might have them.
Forty-dollar range out of all, we're talking seasonal.
Well, right.
Summer held, in-armed, part-time jailers, part-time dispatch.
That's what I'm talking, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, throughout a whole year, I would say the 40-ish range, I'm guessing.
Um, yeah.
That's a total guess, just.
Part-time that we're.
Yeah.
That do, that do get the.
That, that, no, that are.
That do not get.
Right.
Health insurance coverage, but they work, you know, a certain number of hours weekly, and I'm not talking about seasonal.
Oh, I'm, I just know, like, anything that fits with that category.
Right. And I'm not talking about seasonal, just for my hard time.
Less than that if you're.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and stick to the agenda and.
But I do take economic development serious. I do not like the resolution, but I would like a dollar amount, and I do want somebody actively down here so that people could, kind of scheduled time that, so people could come down and visit if so be it.
Okay.
And a, and a space to put them at.
And we have that.
Yes.
So.
Which is in this agreement, but I, I don't think I need a resolution to do that.
And I, what I would like to see, and I don't think it needs to be a resolution because, you know, if we need to increase or decrease the amount or whatever, we don't wanna have to do the resolution every year, but I, when we do fund and it's designated for, to go towards insurance, I'd like to keep that amount separate or designate that separately from just the flat dollar amount we give them, so they can see that we're actually paying towards benefits.
Would you like them to show you that the employees, in order to get this money, they would have to show that they are, that they do have healthcare? Each employee does have healthcare to get this funding? Each employee does have healthcare to get this funding? This additional funding?
It'd be like when we do-
Whether it's with us or not.
Other economic development agreements, they have to show that they have so many employees according to the agreement, their economic development agreement, you know, proof of insurability at the end of the, the year. I'd be okay with that. So I think we should reach out to the chair of the Iowa Falls and Ackley Economic Development and invite them to the next meeting and, and discuss this and, and, you know, have that open discussion with them.
Mm-hmm.
So at this time, no action?
Correct.
What you would suggest?
Okay. Okay, the next item I have is item number 18, the change of status for the board supervisors department. So this is just a change of status, adding Mindy McMillan as safety coordinator, comes out of line 80 insurance. The duties of the county safety coordinator will be added to Mindy's current job duties. And we've talked about this with the auditor, since she worked part-time in the auditor's office, but she currently has responsibilities working with Heartland Risk, and she's doing a lot of this already, so it's just making sure that she's properly compensated for doing the work.
She, she's not part-time in the auditor's office, she's full-time now.
Full-time.
Yeah. Part, part of my questioning here is, she is a employee of the auditor. I don't have a problem putting money into the auditor's budget, but I believe the auditor should set the budget, because of the job increases here, you might take away from a job elsewhere. And I believe that the auditor should probably be the one to set that rate. The money we've set aside for a safety coordinator, I don't have a problem just putting that full amount into that budget line item, whether it be overtime, mileage, what it gets used for. But I, the safety coordinator is appointed by the board.
Right.
But the employee is still under the auditor. So I have, I'm uncomfortable putting in a dollar amount there, I believe that should be-
Right.
The choice of the auditor in this situation.
Sure.
And the dollar amount that we allocated for safety was 4,000, I thought it was five, but I think it's lower.
I think-
But we'd have to take that full budget, I would just release that full budget amount to the auditor and have her-
Let her set the compensation or advise us on what the compensation will be set at.
That, that's what I feel.
Okay.
But I have no point appointing Mindy as safety coordinator, dollar amount to be determined by the auditor.
Okay. Is that a motion?
I don't know if I can do that motion or-
One second.
I, I don't know if I can do the-
I can go back to the auditor and discuss the logistics and bring it back for next week.
Yeah, I think we need to talk to Jessica about that, if that's what she prefers to do or not, so she may not one-
Yeah, I don't, I personally don't think it's fair to take her employee away from her-
No, I know.
And the duty she's budgeted to do as well, let's just give the whole budget out.
I talked to her about that, and she said it wouldn't take away from any of her duties, that she should have the time to do this.
But it will, it will take more days away than she's been there. There are meetings that she does attend, there's time she'll be losing.
Yeah, let me review it with auditor Laura and then we can discuss it again next week.
All right, so we table this too.
Item 19, I have a-
Before we move on, what would Mindy be doing for-
I can get you a job description.
For the supervisor, for you guys.
She would be the safety coordinator.
She does it for the county. It's not just for us, it's for the entire county.
So when OSHA comes to town, when our insurance company comes to inspect buildings, when it's coordinating trainings with staff, that's what the person does.
Accidents happen, who does the paperwork? That, this, these are, and I believe she's doing a lot of this already.
Yeah, I think so too.
Didn't Roxanne-
And has been.
Do this?
Yep. Correct. Okay. Item 19, change of status at the county attorney's office.
I'll make a motion to approve the change of status, it's a resignation by Courtney Vincent in the county attorney's office, she's a paralegal. Her last day of work will be July 13th, 2018.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion of second, any discussion?
She's done a good job.
Yeah, she's-
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item 20, I have the sheriff's monthly report.
I'll make a move, motion to approve the sheriff's monthly report.
I'll second it.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Yes.
What, what's all in the sheriff's report?
I'll give them my copy.
All the, all the fees they've collected for the month of June.
I have a motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, I have the sheriff's annual report.